Hold the Line with Mike Solan is brought to you by the Seattle Police Officers Guild, Seattle's public safety voice. And by Heart to Heart Medical Supply. Heart to Heart is an American company offering FDA-registered respirator masks at the lowest prices. Heart to Heart offers free same-day shipping and by using the promo code DELTA at checkout, you can receive 5% off your entire order. Visit hearttoheart.com. That's H-A-R-T, the number two, H-A-R-T.com. Heart to Heart, where great masks are just a click away.
I'm in this race to win, but before our people right now, our city is a real choice.
The line must be drawn here. This far, no farther. This is where we hold them. This is where we fight.
We will not go quietly into the night. We will not vanish out of fight. Hold the line!
Hey, welcome back to Hold the Line with Mike Solan. I have a very special guest for episode 17, one that I think can move the needle politically to protect you and your public safety. As we all know, there's been a defunding nonsensical activist movement going on here ever since George Floyd. And there is an incumbent coming up into the election cycle, Teresa Mosqueta for position eight, which is the city-at-large position, who I think is in a bit of a fight with somebody that has your best public safety interest in mind. That individual has buy-in to the community, has lived here for a very long time, and is deeply concerned about where we're headed in our urban decay. Without further ado, I want to welcome Ken Wilson. Welcome to Hold the Line with Mike Solan.
Thanks so much, Mike, and thanks for having me and this chance to start a dialogue, get us back to connected, understand maybe a better connection for how this council can work and work really positively with our law enforcement so we can get things to happen and be back to where we want to be.
I think you just nailed it. You said a better connection.
Absolutely. So this council and even the incumbent in particular was instrumental in trying to drive that separation. And even in many of her community meetings, she talked about how, no, 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 we didn't even allow the police to talk during this chop zone and things that were going on. And that's 100% wrong. Even if you have this disagreement, this is your public safety. You should be working with them. You're the council that helped fund them and figure them out, and we need to help you do better so that we all get a better police, a more effective and efficient use of our dollars. This is what I want to be about. I want to be that council member that helps reconnect us and get back to really good stuff and making the very best of everything that we can do. And as an engineer, that's what we do. How much, what's the minimum number of rebar I can use to get this right? So, you know, this is all about efficiency as well for me, but I really think that great opportunity to get this council back to connected with our-
Well, I think you said it. I think rebar is what's needed here. We need a complete public safety overhaul, and that starts with elections coming up on Tuesday, November 2nd.
Really fast, really fast. Get out there and vote, please. And that's what this is about, too. I'm here to ask for your vote and ask for your audience to look and evaluate these two candidates. This is really rare. I'm a very different kind of person, as you started off. I'm a business owner. I'm an engineer. Thirty years I've been doing civil engineering and a lot of background. And I was doing a lot of work. You go around this town, you'll see my Northgate Bridge. You'll see the work that I did for Magnolia 20 years ago-
So we're talking-
-to save it.
I think your pedigree to a degree, and as you're describing who you are to the audience, is infrastructure, right? Engineering, building bridges, roads, getting transportation going, right? I think that's your bread and butter.
It is my bread and butter, and that's my definite wheelhouse. I'm trying to bring less politics to our and more central running the business. Get back to running the shop. Let's get the city. It should never be in the news. We should be a very quiet city. We have so many great assets here from companies that are amazing and innovators that were driving on 90-year-old bridges. They're working great. So these are people, a whole history that has built us a great society, and we need to get back to that world-class society that we've lost these last few years under the incumbent.
All right. So if you would just describe yourself outside of your pedigree, which is engineering, what else can you tell the voter, the people that are going to be voting hopefully for you, for the at-large position? Tell us something about you that we really don't know that hasn't been highlighted in, let's say, the local media.
Yeah. So as a person, I think we're getting lots of little bits about how you build your character. But having an engineer is a good start, but there's a lot more to me as well. A family member. We have a lot of diversity, even in my own family, from our daughter who's dated an Indian national for three years. My father is married to a Philippine national. And so we just bring a lot of differences that aren't really obvious here. We're religious. We're part of a Lutheran church on Capitol Hill. And our daughters went to parochial school until high school and middle school. And so we just have a different way of looking at things that gives us a broader perspective about how society works and what's the best way to be kind and interact with people. We have a lot of anger and a lot of knee-jerk responses in our society. And I think having a character where, over years, you're building out of right choices and right choices, now having a chance to come to a council and again, try and use those right choices to give us a better step forward is where I'm at and what the kind differences I bring.
Well, that's, I think you just basically described somebody who's reasonable. And I keep on saying in my talking points, Seattle is being controlled by unreasonable, what I call the activist class. They're the small, but yet very loud group of people that dictate public safety political discourse. And I think what you just basically described about yourself is somebody that wants to recapture reasonable, common sense communication in our society, in our community, which is deeply lacking. Would you agree?
Yeah, 100%. And I also think that this society, Seattle in particular, so when I jumped into the race, even in our household, we were a little concerned, wow, what's this about? What's going on? But it's been the opposite, 100%. So many people are, wow, I'm so glad you've taken this step. And so many people are with good advice and just encouraging words. So it's very different than you, like you say, there's this activist class, but that's really not what's going on here in Seattle. We have so many good people and so many good opportunities to try and do something. But we also need and want each of these people, like when they're thanking me, they're really, we all want that one chance to get back to where we can start centering things-
Where Seattle once was, right?
I think so.
Get back to the middle.
And I don't think it's that far gone that we have these challenges. It's about enforcing laws, some basics. And in our house, my wife's a ref, and so we talk a lot about this pre-game strategy. If everyone knows that we're going to enforce the law, then we don't have the escalations, the chances for safety challenges. Because people expect, if I break this window at the Kid Valley in my house or near my house because they didn't give me free food, something's going to happen, so they won't break the window. What about all this graffiti? It looks like, oh, it's just a public nuisance. No, 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 it's kids. It's not kids. These are escalations of the misdemeanors that turn into gunshots and bad behavior. And we need to get this pre-game back that, no, these are real rules. We're going to enforce the laws on the book.
Yeah, and I think what you're describing is the public safety predicament that Seattle finds itself in. But not just Seattle, but it's on the West Coast, and then I think it's spread nationwide, right? But let's focus specifically on Seattle. There is basically a decriminalize the public safety system where I think a lot of the activist class, the people want to change laws, obviously. We've seen Public Safety Council Chair Lisa Herbold want to pass about, get rid of about 100 gross misdemeanors and misdemeanor crimes, which would make it easier for people not to be held accountable for their actions, which I think has a drastic detrimental impact to our community that you just described. And so I think that's what you're up against. That's what we are all up against in Seattle, is that activists, I don't believe that they represent the majority of citizens here.
All right.
But the people in charge are running the show. And so for instance, you're running for city council. So when I've participated in the public comment platform that the council has, so when the council is debating a bill, whether or not they want to vote yea or nay, you have to provide public comment. And I've said this on the podcast before, I participated when the defunding nonsense was kicked off by the city council. And I called in twice. The second time I did, my phone number was doxed. They released my phone number to the activist group, and I started getting inundated with phone calls. So I just want to make sure that you're prepared for the level of scrutiny that's coming your way, because you are threatening the incumbent significantly.
Yeah.
And it's a testament to you and who you are. I guess I'm just asking you, do you know what you're getting into with the activist culture in this city?
And I think that's interesting, too. As many people, they are shaking my hands and, oh, wow, you're so brave. So this is different. So doing the right thing shouldn't always be about the negative. Oh, what's the negative of it? We do have a lot of good people, and I think it'll be up to me to try and demonstrate even to these council members that maybe feel extreme, that, look at the resulting challenges. Maybe they're pushed into a corner thinking that, oh, this is the path. This is not the path. It's very obvious. It's very clear. So if you have someone that's going to try and work with them and help them fix it, and we talked a little bit about this before, you know, this council is really an echo chamber, and they try and actually close off those voices they don't want to hear. So that even the way that we function with our city needs to change. We need to bring the city, go back to them, go to our community centers, and actually give them a chance to actually have a dialogue with the council. It's not about, oh, here's my numbered question that I wrote in advance. That's nonsense. A lot of times, the important questions come up when you're sitting there. Well, I want to ask a question. So this is about actually changing the format, getting us back in front of them, but also working with people that don't agree with you. So I'll be on a council, like you say, with challenges, and I've stood there at Capitol Hill, maybe people have maybe seen me with my flyer and, hey, did you get a chance to vote? And I'll be doing that again. We don't always agree, but the hope is, and many times we've all been surprised, that they stick around. It's not a huff and I'm going to run away. They stood there with me, and we tried to work it out. And sometimes it starts really quiet. I was at the Sounders game doing the same, and the dad was there, and he said, yeah, this is really great. I love everything you're saying. And finally, after like 10 minutes, the daughter pipes in, you know, what do you feel about the police on Capitol Hill? But they were going through with their sirens and no one- You know, part of it, too, is trying to get an understanding with that level. And I understand that young people have what they feel, a legitimate grievance. So let's hear it, and let's see what's going on. Maybe we're not understanding the police have a method that they have to utilize to get what the results are, public safety for all of us. So if they're doing something that's challenging to you, let's hear it. Maybe there is something they can do better, or maybe we can improve, but it should always be about, let's have a dialogue. I'm not going to always agree with them anyway, but I need to take in those chances to get this new information. Let's go try and figure it out. Maybe they have some words that are right here. I'm hoping and expecting the council will be doing the same for me. I'm an expert in infrastructure. So we have a lot of dollars coming into our city. So I'm hoping sound transit, all these elements that are being built with really powerful assets and a lot of our community's money. When you take billions of dollars away, you're not using it somewhere else. So if you have someone like me on a council that can help this group of nine be that much more efficient, you don't need nine engineers on there. No one wants the nine, we all love Russell Wilson, but we don't want nine Russell Wilsons on the council. Who's going to catch the ball? Who's going to block? We need people that are different, not this echo chamber. So you need someone like me that can give a voice and get a chance to rue some of these steps and get the best out of everything. So we're not always going to agree. I'm going to get hit hard with some things, and many things. My wife's here, too, and we've sat with many people from the community, and I go back, how did I not know that? There's things I learned that, how did I not? We just are different. And so I had no opportunity. Now I heard it. Now, okay, yeah, I can see what you're saying. Let me get in there and think about how we can do something differently.
I absolutely love what you're saying, and I think we're going to get into more of the public safety aspects and just the conversation about speaking with one another. The word that I caught that you just got done saying was dialogue. Dialogue. And the echo chamber, you're so spot on, exists to our detriment in this community. That echo chamber is people that just hear themselves and agree with one another. There's no diversity of thought anymore. There's no moderate approach, in my opinion. And I think what you just emphasized in your speech to me with your words is getting back to a moderate platform of dialogue. Whether or not you agree or disagree, those conversations are critical for a functioning, safe society. So I applaud you, and I also applaud you, how positive you are when you communicate. It's not all destitute.
This is a good city. We have, like I started, a background of amazing innovators, and we all talk, oh, I'm an environmentalist. This was the first environmental. You go to Warehouser, and I'm in Mason County building bridges. 30 years ago, you'll see the sign says, 30 years ago, we planted this forest. These are people that know how business works, but they're also smart about how to get these things done. So it's cutting off business or pretending they're our enemies. That's 100% wrong.
Yeah, and I think public safety is a business. It has to be.
The city is a business-
It has to be a business.
And getting our assets to work. The public safety is fundamental. We can't have recovery. We can't have comfort for people without public safety.
Yeah, and I think getting back to your opponent, who is, I think, living and the example of an echo chamber, who is not open to diversity of thought and not open to open dialogue. This is who, if you haven't seen this, this is who you are currently up against and their ideology in terms of focusing on public safety and how drastic this type of behavior is and not condemning it.
I was here. I try to be safe. I don't want to be anywhere where anything happens. And it turns out that they use success as a force.
Graciela Young, organizer, woman of color, amazing advocate. It sounds like you were trying to breathe exactly as we're out here fighting for the ability-
S.P.D.
For people to breathe.
I need you to do me a favor. Take your guns, put them under your chins, and pull the trigger.
This isn't a response, that protest-
I need you to kill yourselves. That's your only redemption.
What I'm asking you to do is tell me when you were sitting over in the-
Go ahead. Save us the trouble of tearing you apart.
So this is at a protest line during the time when there was a battle at the East Precinct during the George Floyd riots. This is your opponent standing right in front of a person who's using a megaphone to tell police officers that work for our community, that have buy-in to this community, that have gone through the reform work on record time. We did not have anything to do with George Floyd. The president of the city council, the mayor, the current mayor, said that this agency is the modeled reformed agency literally days before George Floyd. And then this happens. We have to hold back the activists who are trying to assault police officers blaming us for George Floyd. And then this, your opponent is right in front of this person and fails to condemn that abhorrent rhetoric directed at people that protect you and your family. What say you with this type of opponent?
Yeah, that's over the top. I mean, just think about it. So the people, and again, these are people to vilify the police, you know, real people that have dedicated their life. They've gone through academy. They've actually been vetted and gone through so much training and so much a part of the community, like you said, and we're in impossible times now. To have your chief police that had, Chief Bess, who had gone through and building up a good transition, get us back to where we need to be, and then suddenly have her budget cut by this person in particular, and her having her actual salary cut. Again, these are very direct challenges that kind of push out. And so now we're in a place where we don't have adequate police. But all these people, you look at it, you know, all the 300 that we've lost or more, and the dedication of the ones to just stay, you know, because you can imagine, how would you feel if your boss, your company that you work for, doesn't even want you, doesn't want you there? So this is the council that you're having. So these people are amazing. We have to really support them and find a way to actually build back good police again so that we can get back to this level. We have to incentivize them. It's going to take money. Look around. Everyone is having huge challenges getting employees.
Police employees.
Well, not just police, everywhere. So who's in the coffee shop? There's a sign everywhere. So how do you get good police? You have to find a way to pay them correctly. You have to incentivize them and let them know that, first off, this council that's been so wrong-headed is going to, in the video and so many other things, the budget is going to be changed. We're going to try and build a relationship, go across the table, and get this so that we can really build back a great police force, just like we want.
I appreciate it. And you mentioned the numbers. I mean, right before Floyd, when we did all the reform work, and I think the purveyor of what a major urban police department should look like in terms of constitutional policing is the Department of Justice. They're the ones that came in in 2012 and basically told the city that they're going to take over, but the city reached a voluntary settlement with them. That's why it's called the settlement agreement. They're on, you know, they basically said, we met all the benchmarks of reform, those 10 points. Check them all off. Politicians said, we did the work trying to convince the public, as they were terminating the settlement agreement right before Floyd, that hundreds of millions of dollars, the business side of it, was invested properly to get us to that model police agency. We had other police brass chiefs, community policing fly into Seattle to look at our model. We were that successful. And so how is it that we can get to this type of decay literally overnight? And then now our community is suffering where we've lost, due to the budget, the 50% pledge from this council, that person, your opponent in particular. How do we get to a point where we've lost 350 officers because of the political betrayal? That's what I refer to it as. And if you equate the latest political moves, we could be looking at, in less than two years' time, losing 600 cops. That's half the department. So if you're a voter, please tell me, tell them, how you, Ken Wilson, are going to alter the course to recruit quality human beings to do the difficult job of policing, as well as invest for other companies to bring in employees post-COVID pandemic?
Right, yeah. And I think that's, I'm glad you bring up the business side, because when, it's not obvious to people, even myself, until I started getting to this further, it's, you know, when you see the police leave for, or staff leave for a reason, a good reason, you have to build that back. And it costs 80,000, sometimes even upwards of $100,000 to retrain and get that actual every officer. So people on the ground here, they don't, oh, it's just, you'll hire 300 police. Yeah, you're going to, no. That's 100,000 per police officer, because it's very rare that you would get a lateral of someone already properly trained, and even then you're going to have to train them. And there's a number of staff, as you said, that we're the model of building in these excellent ideas and trying to get a chance to do constitutional policing correctly and using it so that we're getting everything that we need. So it's really now, now back to the real question, like you said, how do you? So first, I wanted to make sure people know, that was an amazing hit to our budget. When we lost that staff because of a council that says, we're not going to support you for anything, in fact, you're not even allowed in the room when we talk about this, then that's the critical aspect. So when, but the next step, though, how do you get and retain the good officers we already have and have been training? So part of it, too, is, as you know, an officer is responding to every emergency. So how's an officer, can you do that? We have to start creating rotations where we can keep our police without having to be responding to every emergency. Some of their time has to be in the community, doing, building back our positive relationship with them, and not every dawn of emergency. It's just going to escalate, and you know there's right now a lot of overtime going on. There's for a while at the beginning, your wife's, oh, yeah, that's good, get some overtime. No, after a while, you're burned out, your responses are different. So there's so many things that we need to really start investing again to get money back. And so someone like me trying to build this relationship, what we're doing right now, get us a better positive relationship so we can do that at a council level. And hey, no, no, you guys aren't paying attention. This is real dollar for every police officer that we lose. All right, how are we going to keep them? Train them, incentivize them now, actually give them bonuses. You people are doing great. I see the dedication. You're doing what we need. Don't leave. We're going to support you. Give me some time.
I love that message.
These are the things that we need.
And Ken, it doesn't say that we're perfect. I mean, I've always said, you know, I represent about now, 1,000, thanks to the defunding But we're professionals. We're human beings, though, and we make mistakes. And that doesn't mean we're above not making mistakes. We have to hold ourselves accountable. And yes, activist class, we do, 100%. But I think more importantly, what you're saying is, how do you recruit people? How do you build the budget to incentivize people? But I'm really worried about, to your point earlier, where you said that we can't find people to do other jobs. And I'm really worried that we're going to have, maybe, and I don't say have to, but I hope we don't have to lessen the standard to become a police officer just to get a human being to fill the uniform. That's my major concern, because we're not the only agency that experienced the defunding nonsense. That started basically here in Minneapolis and swept across the nation. Now, almost every major urban police department in this nation are experiencing staffing issues, crises. We're competing with other jurisdictions that are witnessing this and trying to get people to fill in the uniform to protect their community. So yes, we have to incentivize, make sure we don't lessen the standards. But I think more to your point, we can't allow politics to infuse itself, take over public safety in this city. It's exactly what we're experiencing. So let's get back to how you're different from your opponent. Okay, I'm just going to ask you a few things. Give me something that's concrete where you differ from Teresa Mosqueta, your opponent, that people have told you based upon your impression of her during community forums and your debates. What is one thing that Ken Wilson can say to the voter? I differ from Teresa Mosqueta because of this one issue. What's the most important issue?
Well, and we might differ on this. So there is a lot of important issues sitting here in front of us. And so there's the easy political side, but I want to reinforce that this is about running a city. So actually, the biggest difference about someone that's in charge of the budget for our city and to watch the West Seattle disaster that's happened, 21 months of problem, when for eight years, they watched and inspected, and that budget didn't move even a penny to get us in the right place we need to go. So this is about people that don't understand what's going on to run and properly run a city, and it's not West Seattle Bridge. What about Ballard Bridge? What about Magnolia Bridge? What about the important infrastructure? Even, we're seeing Montlake had to be redected. Thank goodness that was a state bridge, right? Did we have money for that? Nope, not a penny. They maybe put in some, oh, yeah, yeah, we'll send people to help do the traffic setup. How about that? You know, so this city is not running the city correctly. So where we differ and where I have an opportunity to actually help all this city do things better is at my basis as well, getting the infrastructure to work right, the detention systems that we're building there at that Washington area, right next to Ballard. I mean, these kind of things, if we can be efficient, we can do it even better. And we talk a lot about environmental issues and challenges. I'm always about trying to get protection for our neighborhoods, protect that critical green canopy. So these are differences between us. And then bringing back just the basis, let's enforce the laws that are on the books. And that helps us with inspiring the homeless, to give them a way forward and a path forward so that they know there's a rule. Okay, then I'll accept your help. I'm not going to sit here and stew in my challenges beside the road. So there's so many differences between us. And I know that'd be ideal to say, here's the one. There's just so many. But we, you know, I would start absolutely with getting us back center, getting this infrastructure right, and that's where we're going to go.
Does she exemplify the far-left progressive activist class in your eyes with fumbling the ball with infrastructure and more importantly, public safety in this city?
I absolutely say yes. And I think that's an important point to me, too, as a council member. I am, I understand, I am the people's voice, and I'm asking for a chance to be, to get your vote and be in there to be that, but I am not the political class that's going to be, we shouldn't be on the news. We should be the people that are, wow, that's the best-run city I've ever, this is a world-class city, let's go live in Seattle. That's the way it used to be. We always hear things when we're on the plane about, oh, this is such a kind city, and we're missing all that. So I'm, I'm, I would, you know, the, the mayor can certainly demonstrate how he's going to, you know, do this. I'm the voice that just, okay, the people want this, that's all. I'm not going to stand out there and be the active class. That's not the right way to be. And, and so she's a very distinct difference, what you saw, that wouldn't be me.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Do you think that she represents? If she were in this room, do you think that she represents the majority of Seattle's constituents?
No, no, this is a citywide position.
Who does?
I think the quiet majority in our city, um, there really isn't, isn't a, a person on the council that gets us all. In my, I live in Wallingford, I think Alex Peterson is doing a good job. And I'd love to have the chance to work with him doing things. Um, but again, we're all people, we're going to miss marks on some things and, um, so we can all improve. Even for Peterson, but I think, I think he's a good council member. So, you know, it's really about getting that center and, and reestablishing this connection.
Okay. You briefly mentioned people that you've spoken with, well, you know, during your campaign. What are they, what are they telling you? What's the overall theme that you get hit with more often than not, when you're on the campaign trail?
It's a hundred percent public safety. I even had, um, North Acres Park, and I really appreciate that they did this. Um, middle, it was kind of a late evening, um, rainy, rainy day. There's so much challenges in public safety going on there that we had this circle of all the family, families got together and we're sitting under this car park and we're talking about what's going on. And the real problem is too, that there are people with resources. And there were some people that were on the verge of crying that if, if we don't get this right this time, this is four years, this vote is important, this is your chance to decide. They're very different candidates here that they're just going to move somewhere else. You know, I, I can't keep worrying about my kid in the backyard that can't play. I bought my house on a cul-de-sac next to North Acres Park thinking, and this is an Asian, Asian gentleman saying this to me, thinking that, oh, this is going to be great. Now I can't even put my dog in the backyard. I'm not sure if they're going to steal my dog. What am I going to do? Go to the camp. And at the same meeting, there was two, an elderly woman, 80 years old, and another younger woman who lost her bike from, they stole from her carport. And so they went over there, maybe this is foolish, but well, we'll just walk in the park. We'll go see, see where the bike is, what's going on. And so they see him there and, and they get maced in the face and chased. We know where you live now because we know what, what bike we took, you know? You know, this is about public safety and the response that we can give. So again, back to the beginning, if you set the rules like a ref, like we do in our house, this is the rule, you're going to, you're going to be stopped, then this behavior doesn't happen. We have to at least demonstrate, you know, and, and we talk about how there's patrols and assets that the police are using to patrol areas to maintain. But if they know that we're not enforcing the laws because the council didn't want it, the mayor didn't want it, that what, uh, these are the laws, enforce them. Let them know that this is the rules and there, that's the threshold. So it's really, really about getting good, good council members, a good district attorney that's going to enforce it and get us back to basic public safety. We're not doing anything that's going to be pushed beyond and we can all improve, but we really have to get back to basics.
So I've heard you, you're talking about what you've heard from voters. The number one term is 100% public safety issues.
Yeah, always.
Have you also been told by people that are hopefully going to vote you into office? Have they said to you, and I've heard this as well, that their voices aren't being heard? So do you, Ken Wilson, the council eight position going against incumbent Musqueta, do you view yourself as somebody who will listen to Seattle?
I, I absolutely do. And that's, that's a big part of, like I said, getting into this. We've all written that letter to council members, put the message on the phone, get back these strange responses that are, are just a basic response that you're like, I'm not even sure they understood what I was talking about. Or you get no response. And so even in our candidacy, when we went about this, we were always actually going for your vote, your person as individual, we're not chasing these endorsements. Endorsements may be valuable for someone that's looking for something different, but we're actually about trying to get connection with individuals and peoples and meet with those community members and, and get their vote and understanding of what's really happening. So a lot of times you'll see that even the endorsements themselves come from the top or filling out a form, but the, the backing comes from the people. I'm about trying to get connected to those people and that's where we're standing.
Connecting to the people, would you support in-person meetings again at city council, city hall?
Absolutely. I, I think that's so important, a hundred percent. It's so important. And, you know, we have protocols that we can go through and makes this work. We're, we're all actually doing some of these functions. It's just, this is really valuable to get in front of and see face to face. This needs to be a dialogue and some of the Zoom meetings, you can see how the chat turns into something weird or what's this really about? So we really need to get back to basics and we behave correctly when we're in front of each other instead of hiding behind a screen.
So thank you for answering, uh, that question in terms of people having a feeling that the council doesn't listen to them. They don't answer emails or if they do, they get a canned response. There's no personal connection. So yes, opening up city hall to bring people in to listen to the community, I think is really important. You can also do virtual meetings as well.
You could, well, they're, they can televise it to give more connection, but we can also, there's so many great community centers within the communities. I was in West Seattle at one, we were in Ballard at the Ballard Alliance with, um, the Norwegian Center there. There is so much really life in these communities that we need to go to them.
How would you, how would you, you've said incentivize before for employees, especially police? How would you incentivize the community to actually participate in council meetings? Because I've said before, when I talked about, you know, public forum, public comment, it's usually driven by the activist class. They flood the phone lines with scripted words and statements. That's how it's done. They control the narrative. How do we get our people who are saying that they're not being listened to? How do we incentivize the community to have buy-in during these public comment sessions? To wrestle back reasonable control away from the activist class?
I mean, it, it's really just about giving, giving them an opportunity for voice too, and helping them understand that there's real value in that. So if you're not being listened to, they're ignoring you anyway. A lot of times people are just getting put off and they don't make that extra step. But as I'm talking to people, even now on the campaign trail, I'll talk about myself and I'll say, just like me, I have a successful engineering business. I just built that North Gate Bridge. Do you want another one of those? Sure. California is calling me to ask to do the same, but no, I, I gotta step back. But I'm doing this to do something for our community. And as an individual level, I'm asking people to do the same. Vote for me, but ask for, ask a friend, talk to your neighbors, talk to people. And let's start getting a different engagement because right now we're quiet and I understand that. And I'm in our house the same, but you know, it's time that we have to step out to get what we want. And these are, happen once every four years, you get this opportunity. So it's really important, but what's the advantages? You go back to this community, you get a chance to be in front of them in face and you also change the hours. So this isn't 11 o'clock in the afternoon downtown when you can't find parking or can't get there. You have a job, you have kids that go to soccer practice. Maybe we're going to do meetings on weekends. We're going to find a way to give people the chance, not, not just activists. And, and they have a voice too. They have a position here at the table, but we also need what's going on the rest here. So I've been on public projects forever, you know, 30 years. And we always, I've been on community advisory committees. I've been, um, part of grabbing and understanding even on North Gate, the voice of these different, you know, individuals. Oh yeah, I, I represent this group and okay, yeah, let's sit with them, find out what's going on. But it's really about trying to capture, it's more than just those few. There was a whole community at North Gate that we were trying to get. So we went to schools in the middle of the evening and presented to that public and gave them a chance to actually talk with us and tell us, oh, yeah, this is really good. Can you do something different about the, the mesh? So my kids don't, you know, feel like they're going to fall off the bridge or whatever. There's good, there's good things in everyone and we, we just need to give them first off, one, that we are listening and we're going to respond to you. It may not be the answer you want.
We are listening, we're going to respond to you. So if, if, if.
Then we're going to go more.
If Teresa Musqueta was here in this room and you had a one-on-one with her, in one minute, what kind of conversation would you have with her? And explain to her why she's failing.
I, the, the failings are actually start with this public safety, not enforcing your rules, um, allowing, which is not compassionate to get these people that are, they are people. It's not just, oh, a homeless person, we'll put them in this tiny house. To get them out of their addiction, create a system that they can graduate out and realize it's a long-term. It may take 18 months, 24 months to graduate out of these challenges. So, so for all the short sightedness that they are, I would try and, and demonstrate that getting public safety is number one, your businesses can't function, getting the rest of this to, to actually address homelessness where we're pouring millions of dollars into it, but getting little, little to it, except outreach and no real asset. It's not going away. We need to build, this is, this is our, our time where we have $240 million still coming into this city from the federal level. We should be building a permanent asset that we could utilize. And hopefully people will see my website, there's some ideas about using that obsolete King County Metro Station right next to our sound transit station. And, um, so good ideas.
What would that be used for?
This would be a chance where you would have a community center where you could actually bring back homeless challenges and start giving a, a real place where they could live, not, not something that's.
Treatment, job placement.
Treatment, social services, mental and addiction services. Sometimes when the, the homeless person is on meth and such a challenge, you need to actually substitute with some problem that you could, or with some medicine that you can address the problem.
Hold the line with Mike Solan is sponsored by StopDefunding.com. The senseless trend of defunding police departments must be stopped. Over 200,000 reasonable citizens have already signed our petition and we need your help. Visit StopDefunding.com and add your signature to help us protect public safety. Now more than ever, our voices must be heard. Speak up at StopDefunding.com. So Ken, give me one more example, how you differ from your opponent, the incumbent right now, on the public safety issue that delves into what you just described with homelessness, addiction, housing. How would you change her actions and get Seattle back to some reasonable homeless outreach? That is obviously currently not working.
No, it's not working and it's increasing. And, um, so I would actually build an asset for our future. We know it's not going away. So I talked about trying to use that, that property, if that's King County Metro Station and has become obsolete, we're moving the buses to the transit station with the trains. So now using that asset and, and building on the community that's already going there. This is a county property so that we could jointly work with our, our authority that's happening at the county level. But also U Dub is building a mental facility at the Northwest Hospital just across the bridge as well. There's, uh, North Seattle College so that as you graduate these people through a program, you can actually build them into jobs and build a future life for them and really graduate them into a normalcy that gets back valued for all of us. Plus now you're right next to the transit center so that the trains go everywhere. You could go anywhere and have a job in our community without having a car. And so it really gives us a great path forward. And so this is about difference between her and my is that building a real permanent asset with real value for a long-term community, not just tiny houses that aren't, it's a shed, it's just not a place to live.
Thank you for that. And I think what, what, what people are, are really getting to is when they're not being heard. It's what you've heard, what I've, I've heard, um, when I talk to people in the public is, is almost like the, the homeless have more rights than the regular citizen right now. That they're completely taking over our public parks, our way of life, people that have actually worked hard that don't, more often than not, don't have substance abuse issues. But we're all flawed, we're human beings. So I don't think that the compassion level is there. We're just throwing money at something and nothing is working. So what you just described is a concrete example of something that you think could, could work. There's also those people that don't want help.
Right.
Regardless if you give them a, a, of a, of a apartment or whatever, they don't want it. They actually choose to live on the streets. So then how do we hold them accountable to get us back to a, a quality of life for everyone in this city?
Right. And so I think this is about enforcing the law and, and giving them an inspiration to move along. So if like we're saying that you can't do unsanctioned camping in parks, that's the law. That's nothing new. They know that as well, but now we're not enforcing it. But if you were pushed like all of us, we all need a, um, schedule or actually someone to deadline this and say that, oh, nothing, this isn't going to happen, then we all try harder. These are people, they have plans as well. What's your plan? And if they start seeing the success of our plan to build and transition them off, they'll, I think people are going to come along. This is absolutely going to take time and it's not everybody. But you can see even in Mark Dones, who is going to be part of this King County Authority, someone that built themselves positively out of the program and is very successful. He does still have medication he takes, that's normal. That's how we all build our normalcy. So we want to show that there's a path and get them to buy in it. They're people, this isn't just an object. This is someone that wants to be proud of themselves as well. We just need to give them the path and so they can see that.
The homeless industrial complex is wickedly strong. It's, it's, it's going to be an absolute battle. And I love the way that you're taking a positive approach with examples of how you at the at-large position eight position, position presenter, sorry, I said it twice, but you're doing, I think, really good job explaining how you would change the current methodology coming from the incumbent right now. Ken, if you're unsuccessful in your campaign to unseat somebody who doesn't support public safety, doesn't have the overall community's interest in mind and only appeals to the small activist class, where do we go from here if this occurs?
I, so it's not about me. I'm not going to be, I didn't come into this to be political or part of politics. And I've had, I'm standing there, I'm handing out sign to one person that's asked and the neighbor comes across here. Oh, oh, you're Ken Wilson, you're Ken Wilson. Oh yeah, yeah, tell me about yourself. And then, well, if you don't win, are, are you going to run again? You have name recognition now, right? Right? No, it's not about this. This is now. So I'm in this race to win, but before our people right now, our city is a real choice. That this is it, I'm not going to run again. This isn't about me wanting to be a politician, wanting to be in front of people and do this tough job. This is me making a sacrifice, knowing that I have a successful business. I'm building great infrastructure and doing things that I love, but something is really wrong. And a lot of the people that I meet with are the same. I, oh, I'm, I'm always so on that left side, but I just don't, something is wrong. I don't, I can't do it. So they have to realize that it's now, this is it. Once every four years, you're not going to get this chance again. Someone that's, that's got all the qualifications to help you start running your city better, trying to get your safety back, trying to get the homeless to have real accountability, something that we're putting money into. This is a community is putting money into, but not getting anything accountable in response. They'll get on the phone, the incumbents will tell you, oh, it's worse. You've had all these years, you're telling me it's worse? And you, you're asking us to vote for you again. So I'm not that way, but I'm not coming back. This is now, this is, we have a great chance to do something. And most especially I got into this race because I'm seeing infrastructure problems and I'm seeing a community that is not being aided in the least by even their own SDOT and other programs. They're not paying attention. 90,000 of those 108,000 are just cars. And you couldn't figure out how to have one lane for the last 10 months while it sat there blank? You couldn't take off rails that are heavier than actually the cars and make this work for people? This is about a community that is not being responded by any aspect of government. We need to get the government back to working for us. And this is now, so I'm not going to be doing this again. So this is, we're going to do a great job, let's get in there. But realize that, you know, people may be waffling on the side, well, maybe I, I like them, but maybe next time. No, this is it. We need to start making changes now and I'm not going to be back.
Ken, you just gave me goosebumps. And what, what I got from you is real. Like I, you know, as a police officer, I'm trained to read people, trained to read body language and just see where they're BSing. I think you embody somebody that's bringing it with realism and authenticity. It's, it's, it's compelling. Uh, I think it moves the needle for me and a lot of people that are going to watch this. How do we get in touch with you? Get plug, plug your campaign.
Absolutely. And, and most importantly, this is about this people, I want to get that vote. Um, you can check out my website, uh, this is the small version, there are big ones around. Look at those billboards and great stuff. Ken4, F O R, council8.com. And that's a chance, there's even a, on the about page, a place where you can add an email and zap something to me or, or your comments, donate if you want to. Most importantly, get out and vote, let's get these ballots in now and let's get this done. This is, this is the time, we have a good opportunity and really great choice here. Let's, let's move this border and get it done.
I really like what you said. I want to thank you for your time today. I saw you this, earlier this week off of West Marginal with your, with your vehicle waving to, to, to people that were commuting because of the West Seattle Bridge calamity.
Yeah.
And to, to me, it was like, here's a guy who believes and wants to change Seattle. And you, you, you're really doing it. You're out there in the rain waving to cars. I think I honked at you.
I was out there today, over, you people saw me right there at the edge of that Fremont Bridge.
I'm telling you folks.
It's, it's everywhere, but it's really, it's really happening. This is, this is now, so.
I'm getting the feeling Ken really believes in Seattle. He wants Seattle to change its current path. I love what you said, it's now. It's now, folks. You've got what, four days left until the election?
Maybe five, but get them in. It's time to, this weekend, need to get those ballots in. And drop them in the box, you know, not the mailbox. They provide these boxes. My wife and I have done the same, oh, we'll put it in, they, they don't postmark anything anymore. So just put it in the box and, and get it, get it done.
Folks, Ken Wilson for position eight, the at-large city council position. Seattle is worth. Folks, Ken Wilson for position eight, the at-large city council position, Seattle is worth saving. Ken exemplifies what Seattle could be. Make sure we get your vote out. You have to get involved. The activist class gets the vote out late in these elections. We got to close the gap. We have to save Seattle because Seattle is worth saving. Thanks for your time today. I wish you the best of luck and I'm going to stay positive that you're going to get it. And hopefully that we can have a, a better path for Seattle.
We're there. We're, we're doing great. And so many supporters, so many people, this is, this is the right way and it's going to happen.
Thanks, buddy.
Thanks for having me, Mike. Appreciate it.
Hey, thanks for watching Hold the Line with Mike Solan. Together, if you like and subscribe, perhaps we can all continue to save Seattle because she's worth it and still hold the line. Thanks a lot.